Let's call the Board of Commissioners to order here at 10:04. All those able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Do we have any public for comment? Items not appearing on today's agenda. All right. Seeing none additions to the agenda from the Board. No?
I'm good.
All right. Moving out of the meeting minutes. If they're good, we'll take a motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes from the meeting held February 18th.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for the meeting held on February 18th. All those in favor do so by saying aye. Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. All right. We'll move on to our proclamation. Proclamation number seven, proclaiming March as Red Cross Month in Center County. And we have, I think, says here Gary and Melinda?
Gary's here.
Or this Gary.
Gary's still.
Melinda may be stuck behind that.
Behind that house. Yes. Well, why don't you come on up to the podium and introduce yourself and tell us a bit about the Red Cross because I know you do a whole lot more than what most people think you do.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. My name is Gary Langsdale. I'm a resident of Spring Mills. I'm a member of the Board of the Central Pennsylvania Red Cross and an active volunteer. The Red Cross in Center County in the last nine months since July 1 has had 123 volunteers who are residents of the county helping out. Hello, Melinda. Come on up here.
Yeah.
So those 123 volunteers have been very active. This is Melinda Rosario, who is the dis-
Community Disaster Program Manager.
Thank you. We have responded to six disasters, large-scale disasters, in addition to house fires and that sort of thing. We collected, we were speaking of blood a while ago, and you don't have to worry, Erin, because we've already collected 4,407 units of blood just since July 1 in Center County. A lot of that came through Penn State's help and assistance from the students, faculty, and staff there. We've also helped 106 people, families, through what we call the Home Fire Campaign, which is the installation of smoke detectors. The Red Cross provides free smoke detectors if people want smoke detectors installed in their houses. I'm proud to be one of the people who goes out with a drill and a smoke detector and installs them in people's houses, as many as they need.
So it's not only free, in some cases you actually install them?
We install them in every case.
Wow. Nice.
No charge to the residents. We've also provided service to 36 armed services members and their families during the last year. And that's about all I have to say. We are delighted to be here to represent the good work that the Red Cross does, and we genuinely appreciate the support that we receive throughout Center County and particularly from the Commissioners.
Great. Well, thank you, Gary. And Melinda, is there some things you'd like to add?
Sure. Thank you for having us. March is Red Cross Month. I know we're a little bit early due to our scheduling, but thank you all for having us early. I have not seen any of you before. I took over this part of the area on July 1st, so all these are our new up-to-date stats. We're really excited to have expanded our territory. This area has always been represented by the Red Cross, but we redrew our imaginary borders. So we have a slightly different team serving you all now. That does not change our services at all. Regardless of where we are physically based, we serve every community every day. We want to serve the community. We want folks to call us. If you hear of community members in need, please have them call 1-800-RED-CROSS. A lot of times, our more rural counties, folks are very resilient. They don't necessarily want help. Our help is free every single day, and we want to be able to provide that help to folks. There is no ask in return, but they're going to need any help they can get if they do have a disaster. So we are happy to provide that, and it doesn't mean it has to be a major disaster. If they have a fire in their home, we want to meet with them, and we want to meet with them that day so we can start them on the road to recovery, and it doesn't end that day. We will walk with them for about 30 days to make sure they're getting back on their feet. It's just very, very important that folks know there's no obligation when we serve you. This is purely a gift of your neighbors. 90% of the funds we receive go directly into the hands of clients, so it truly is a gift that's donated from other folks in the community. We want to get that into the right hands.
That's tremendous.
Yeah. We're really excited to have expanded our area so that we're up here. Ways, I'm going to give an ask of you all. Your local fire departments, please have them get in touch with us. We sent out a mailing to every single fire department. We've heard back from one. We need to know them because that's where we're getting our direct referrals from. We need them to call us, and we need them to be asking the residents the correct questions. When you ask a resident, "Do you need the Red Cross?", they don't know what that means.
Right.
We want to let them know what that means so that we can come out and provide the services folks need. And that could range from helping them find a place to stay to replacing the medications they lost in a fire. That's incredibly important. It could be providing some disaster mental health services or spiritual care services. Incredibly important when you've just experienced a disaster. School districts, we have programs for school students, completely free. We can come out and provide those. The fire departments get overwhelmed in October. We can help and we can provide those programs year-round. Any other community organizations that serve any groups that would be just needing education and services, we have year-round programs to educate people on preventing a home fire. Almost every single home fire is preventable if you have the right education, and we would love to come out and speak to groups about that. So please, if you need us, give us a call. That's what we want to do. We want to be here in the community, providing those services, and no one ever needs to come to us. We will always come to them. They don't have to drive to our office. Our goal is to meet people where they're at when they have a need.
What's your area? What's your region?
Sure. Well, the entire region is the Greater Pennsylvania region, and we cover 61 out of 67 counties in Pennsylvania. Our specific area, we cover Dauphin, Cumberland, Perry, Mifflin, Juniata, and Center Counties. So it is a large area. We have two paid disaster staff in that area, but as Gary said, we're staffed by volunteers. Over 90% of our work is done by volunteers that live right here in your community, so you don't need to wait for me or for Tom to be here. The volunteers that live in your community and know the culture here will be the ones providing those direct services to residents.
And we have an office in State College.
Interesting. Good to know.
Yeah. So as you've mentioned, you're more than just the blood supply. You're more than just major disasters. You would like fire companies to get ahold of you because anytime there's even just a fire in a single residence, you're happy to help.
Absolutely.
And run out and do things like counseling, replacing lost medications. I'm assuming things like clothing as well.
Yes. We give, we don't directly provide clothing or household goods, but that's part of our job is to provide those referrals to folks with the other partners in your community that do that better. They already have an ongoing supply, and especially when someone has a disaster need, they also want to help, and we're part of that network. So we have those immediate ties that if someone needs clothing and we refer them, they get bumped to the front of the line. So let's make that happen.
Very good. Good for you, Subsha.
So it might be helpful to be in touch with our emergency management.
Yes, we are.
Within Center County Government.
We're already buddies.
Great. So that might be a good way to make sure all the fire companies have your contact information and are providing that on. So I know one of the things you do also is, of course, first aid and CPR classes. You do a lot of the training around the area for those purposes, and we're really grateful for that.
Absolutely. Those go through our Training Services Department, and if you have a group as small as eight people, you can arrange your own private class for your group, but individuals can join any classes that are offered in the area, and all that information is available on redcross.org.
Great. So any small groups that want to do that training can do that with you?
Absolutely. Yes. They offer first aid, CPR, AED certifications, lifeguard certifications, babysitter certifications for those teenagers looking to get their first jobs. They offer those. Also, they do some help, public health certifications like CNAs.
Yeah. That's great. Good. Well, thank you so much for the work you do in our community. I think anything we can do to get the word out so that folks realize you're one of the first calls they should make if something should occur that, you know, they need your help.
Thank you all for having us and for your support.
Doug, go ahead, Mr. Dershowitz.
Well, I, thanks for highlighting all the different programs that you offer. I think most of us are familiar with the first aid, but I remember as a young lad going through the life-saving, you know, training, and that's just really, really important parts of our community because I think we take for granted the fact that CPR, you know, first aid, you know, life-saving, that's all, that's all important, and it's really fantastic that we continue those traditions and keep things going. And I'm sure there's some programs like your AED training that is, you know, another one of those programs that people maybe take for granted, but then, of course, you collect a lot of blood, and that's really, that's really the life-saving measure that you're most famous for probably, but, you know, your disaster relief and work is very important as well, and we appreciate and like to highlight those things so folks are, you know, are cognizant of it and remember that if they have a problem, that there are resources out there to assist them. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we'll pass the proclamation, then we'll have you come up for a photo.
Great.
Okay. So I will move to adopt proclamation seven of 2025, proclaiming March 2025 as Red Cross Month in Center County.
And I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to adopt proclamation number seven, proclaiming March as Red Cross Month in Center County. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. Come on up, including, was it Tom?
Yes.
Yep.
Thanks for carrying the banner.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Coming over here, maybe we'll have you three more for the State College.
Thank you so much for having me.
Absolutely.
You're the cover.
We'll rotate in. I should have somebody taller than me.
All right. If y'all can move over this way just a minute.
Just a pinch.
Go, go, just a little more.
A little more?
All right. Close the, not too much.
Let us know where you want.
All right. That's good. Three, two, five, smile. Great stuff, great stuff. Other phone.
Thank you.
If it's possible, Jay, break your pipe. You're coming more technically savvy than I am.
Have a good day.
Keep us safe out there. We'll try.
Thank you so much.
We'll go work on that.
There you go. I knew you would.
Okay. Well, thanks again for the Red Cross for coming and all the great things they do for Center County and all of the other counties in Central Pennsylvania. Now we have an announcement, and Jen, I'm assuming you'll be joining us possibly at the computer. Jen from Tax Claim and Collections will talk about the Center County Real Estate Tax Bill Demo for roughly the first time in 20 years. We're doing a huge upgrade to our tax bills.
Yes.
So we'll get that out in the community.
Thank you for having me. Yes, we'll be having a new format in Center County for the 2025 Center County Real Estate Tax Billing. I'm here today to do a presentation to inform you of the new tax billing in Center County and the municipalities for the March 1 billing cycle. There will be some exceptions that I will announce at the end of the presentation. I do have a PowerPoint for you all to go through to explain how the bill will be looking to you. This is how the front of the bill will be received in the mail to you. It is a self-sealed perforated form, which I think many of us have received those in the mail if you've gotten a check or a receipt from a direct deposit, very similar to that. When you open the bill, the bill format in full view, you will have perforated areas that I will be explaining. This is the top portion that is perforated. That will be kept for the taxpayer's receipt and to have what they paid. This portion of the bill will show the tax collector information and payment information with their office hours and email address and telephone number if they have one. This portion here will indicate a taxing authority's mileage rates and tax amounts and how they are dispersed. This portion will tell you the payment amounts and the payment dates due. As you can see, the 2% discount, now these are sample bills, but the discount period runs from March 1st to April 30th. Then the face, which would be the middle portion, is from May 1st to June 30th, and then the 10% penalty that runs from July 1 to December 31st. You will have this lower portion that is the property information. This will show your parcel number if you have a vacant lot, if you have a residence with acreage and what kind of dwelling, your land assessment, your building assessments, and your total assessment, along with your acreage, property description, location, and your deed reference, and another indication that all real estate tax bills are due by December 31st. On this portion is the portion that you're going to want to send back to your tax collector. This section above will be your receipt that you will receive back in the mail. However, you will need to enclose a self-addressed stamped envelope to receive your receipt. The taxpayer then will sign and date and mail this top portion back for your records. This is the tax collector's copy. This information shows the tax collector what the property is that you're making payment for, and they may or may not keep that portion for their records. They may mail that back to you. So the top part of the perforation will stay with the taxpayer, and then the bottom two portions will go back to your tax collector. This will be the indication of your mailer on the front. If it falls off or you perforate it off, it is up to you if you want to keep this to show your mailing date, or you can disregard. So that, I do have an example of how to open the new tax bills. All you have to do is fold the perforations and tear these off, and then open up the bills. As I said, this part may fall off. You may keep that or disregard. You will tear the top portion off for your records and send this back to your tax collector with a self-addressed stamped envelope, and then your tax collector will either mail you this section or the full thing. It'll be up to their discretion. But we do have some exceptions for Center County. We do have our three home road municipalities that you all received two tax bills for, and that would be College Township and State College Borough. They are staying with the old fat format for their municipality. For our third home road, Ferguson Township, they have chosen to go with the new format for their municipal billing. In addition to the home road, we have Marion Township, Walker Township, and Taylor Township. These taxpayers are used to receiving only one tax bill. They will now start receiving two separate tax bills, one for the county and one for the municipality. These tax collectors issued newsletters to all the taxpayers and their municipalities. Please review that newsletter or contact that tax collector for any additional information you may have. Does anyone have any questions?
We'll mention, Jen, roughly when will the county's tax bills be going out? Like next week?
They should be mailed out by Friday.
Okay. This week, then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So people should start receiving them?
Early next week.
Early next week?
Yes.
And the discount period is until the 30th of April, and then, then you're at the, at the face value, and then when does the, when does the penalty period begin then?
So July 1st. So you can kind of keep it in your head. It's when the school billing happens is the, starts the 10% penalty for the county and municipal bills.
And in the, in the spring, once again, that's the county and the municipal taxes that are sent out.
Yes. March 1st are when the county and the municipal, some municipalities already have theirs. I know for these ones that are staying with the old format, theirs went out this week, so you should be receiving those in the old format, but the county portion will be mailed out this coming Friday.
And in the fall, that's when the school districts bill?
Yes, and the school districts will bill in the fall.
Mr. Concepcion, any comments or questions?
No, but it's a really helpful presentation for understanding all the components of this.
What is the change?
It has. And questions from the press on that? No? All right. So as we mentioned, we are, we've upgraded the software, and the bill's going to look a little different. In most cases, you'll just get the one bill, but there's, what, it sounds like at least five different townships or boroughs where you'll get two bills now.
A home road you've always received two, so that would be College, Ferguson, and State College Borough. Ferguson Township is going with the new platform.
All right.
College and the Borough are staying with the old format for the municipal billing. The county portion will be the new format.
All right. And then you mentioned there's three other townships that may have already mailed out the bills.
Yes. That would be Marion Township, Walker Township, and Taylor Township.
All right. Great. Well, it's Pennsylvania, we're Commonwealth, everybody does everything just a little bit differently.
That is correct.
All right. Well, unless there's any more questions for Jen, we appreciate you coming, explaining that, and showing exactly how to separate all the different forms.
Thank you very much for having me.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Jen.
Appreciate that. Good stuff.
All right. So now we will move on to contracts and authorizations, and Glenn, the warden at the Center County Correctional Facility has two for us.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I ask for your consideration of approval for a contract with Watson's, Watkins Security to purchase three new servers and two new hard drives for our facility camera system. Our current system is reaching the end of life. One of our servers has actually been down and is not repairable. The total contract is $110,973. Watkins is a CoStarz vendor. Watkins also does the cameras, and I believe the majority of the other county buildings, courthouse, sheriff's office, I believe they're doing Center Crest as well. We had Chad, Mark from MCP, Tanya, and Michael from MCP sit in on the meetings with us to go over the technology stuff with the camera presentations that we looked at, and we agreed that Watkins was offering us the best product. So I ask for your approval of that contract. Along with that is a consideration to approve a new service agreement also with Watkins Security. They'll provide routine and emergency services to the current camera system and the new hard drives. This service agreement will replace a current agreement that we will exercise our 30-day cancellation rights on. This contract total is for $14,400 and runs from February 23rd, 2025 through December 31st, 2025.
Great. Thanks for covering that, Glenn. Obviously, at the county, we try to make things last as long as possible, but with our backup server down and not repairable.
Yeah.
You don't want to operate a correctional facility very long within, under that circumstance.
Nah. Not something we wanted to repair or replace, but sort of forced our hand, so.
Mr. Concepcion.
No. Sounds good.
Mr. Dershowitz. All right.
Thank you.
And I will move to approve Center County Correctional Facility items one and two.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the two items for the Center County Correctional Facility. All those in favor do so by saying aye. Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. Great. Thanks, Glenn.
Thank you.
And now Jonathan's got a couple of items for us for different county budget areas.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm asking for your consideration and approval of a contract with Hoffman-Leakey Architects to provide design services for the probation offices at the courthouse. This includes both the adult and juvenile offices, so it would be essentially the entire fourth floor of the courthouse. Those offices are fairly old as they used to be, the DA's office, so they are in need of an update, and that contract is for $44,700.
Great. Thanks, Jonathan. We appreciate their patience and glad you took a little extra time to get some additional bids on this because I believe it ended up saving us some noticeable money, which we appreciate.
Yes.
Mr. Concepcion.
Yeah, I'm glad you got to work with a local firm that's just down the street from the courthouse.
Yes. Mr. Dershowitz.
It's all good. Thank you.
All right.
Okay. I'll move to add the contract with Hoffman-Leakey Architects LLC to next week's consent agenda.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to add the contract with Hoffman-Leakey Architects LLC to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye. Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries, and you've got another item for us, Jonathan.
Yes. So I'm asking for your consideration and approval of a contract addendum with 911 Cellular and Watkins Security to provide software and licensing for the county duress system upgrades. The previous contract was approved for $33,000. This is just the software and licensing agreements with those corporations.
All right. Looks like it's included in the original contract, then. Wonderful.
Correct.
Yes. Mr. Concepcion. Mr. Dershowitz.
Good.
Then I'll move to approve the contract addendum with 911 Cellular.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the contract addendum with 911 Cellular. All those in favor do so by saying aye. Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. Great. Thanks, Jonathan.
Thank you.
And now I believe Natalie is, yes, there she is, has a grant application, which we very much appreciate.
Good morning. So looking to approve our grant application to the Pennsylvania Historical Preservation for the Keystone Historical Preservation Construction Grant. We are looking to apply for this because our courthouse is listed as under the National Historical Register, and buildings with designation of that are eligible for preservation, renovation, restoration type of projects for funding, and so we're looking to apply. The grant total is 155,000. However, it's a 50/50, so 50%, 50% of it would be grant funding at 77,500, and then we would do the remaining match for that same amount. These are ideas that are done during our capital planning for 2026, so we would be looking to do renovations specific to courtroom three, so some HVAC, electrical, and general construction. We'll be looking to refinish all the benches in courtroom one, and we'd also be looking to do some tile removal and insulation of VCT near the main and rear stairs. Jonathan, who's just up here, has the capital planning that he reviews with Administration and Finance, and so all of this would be eligible for the grant. If we were awarded the grant, it runs from September 1 of this year through September 30th of 2027, so it aligns with us being able to do this construction in 2026.
Great. Thanks for covering that, Natalie. It is the oldest operating courthouse in the state with foundations dating back to the 1830s, which I know John is very familiar with now, and I believe it's the second oldest courthouse, period, in the Commonwealth. And it's beautiful, but it is a bit of a money pit. So we appreciate your work on potentially having the state cover half the cost.
Yep. Mr. Concepcion.
Yeah. This is hopefully a good opportunity for us, but, you know, I would think we would have a strong application because of the historical nature of our courthouse.
So, Mr. Dershowitz.
Well, I think it all comes down to maintenance, and it's, although the building is almost 200 years old, it's an incredibly important fixture to not only county government but to the Belfont community as well. And maintenance of that building, it's either pay me now or pay me a lot later.
Yeah.
So it's, it is important that we keep up with it and let, keep the deferred maintenance, you know, up to date, and this is just part of that whole process of making it, you know, modernizing it and keeping it ready to go, so.
Exactly. The Commissioners have put millions of dollars into the courthouse over the last 10 years or so, but trying to imagine turning up onto High Street in Belfont and not seeing the courthouse there, I can't, I can't imagine it. Any questions?
the last 10 years or so, but trying to imagine turning up onto High Street in Belfont and not seeing the courthouse there, I can't, I can't imagine it. Any questions?
It's a fixture.
Yeah, it's quite the fixture. Any questions from the press?
Looking at refurbishing what is there? You're not looking to add another courtroom or add any other?
No, just refurbishing what's there. Good question, Gary. We're still, thankfully, we have four very hard-working Court of Common Pleas judges who I believe are now all handling a specialty court, which we very much appreciate. So knock on wood, right now, no additional courtrooms needed. Any other questions? Is that what's good one? No? All right. We'll take a motion.
Then I'll move to approve the grant application for the Keystone Historic Preservation Construction Grant.
I will second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve the grant application for the Keystone Historic Preservation Construction Grant. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Great. Thank you, Natalie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to human services, we have Jeff from Adult Services with an MOU for a continuum of care.
Yes, hi. Good morning. I'm here to ask for your consideration of approval of a memorandum of understanding with the Eastern PA Continuum of Care to provide an in-kind match of $11,720 from volunteer time during the annual point-in-time count to support efforts during the fiscal year planning grant contract for HUD funding.
Great. Thanks. We appreciate Eastern PA Continuum of Care assistance with that, and kind of thankfully, the numbers are roughly in the same ballpark as they've been in recent years. And that night was so cold, I believe we had only two unhoused people who didn't have a residence. And thanks to housing transitions out of the cold, and I'm sure Julia's going to kick me because I'm probably forgetting a couple other groups, but we want to thank them all for their assistance during this process.
Commissioner Concepcion.
Yeah, thanks. I think, you know, at this point in time, it's, obviously, it's a requirement, but it's also really important for us to be aware of what the needs are in our community.
Commissioner Dershowitz.
Well, welcome. For your first time in front of the board, you're doing great. We really appreciate you coming in and covering this. It's an important subject. Obviously, homelessness is an issue that we're very well aware of and concerned about, and thank you for covering that and giving us the data that we need to move forward and keeping people safe. So we appreciate you coming in.
You're welcome. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Is there a question, Gary? All right. We'll take a motion.
I will move to approve the memorandum of understanding with Eastern PA Continuum of Care.
I will second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Eastern PA Continuum of Care. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Great. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. And now Julia has an item for us for the super department. I believe this one is probably for mental health.
That is correct. So good morning. I'm asking you to consider the approval of addendum number one with Crossroads Counseling Incorporated. This is to just add additional funding to outpatient treatment and recovery support services. So we'd like you to approve adding $191,653. That will bring their new contract total to $336,653.
We very much appreciate the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania increasing the grant amount. I'm certain with the mental health crisis going on in the county right now, that our citizens could definitely use the assistance.
That's true. Yes.
Commissioner Concepcion.
Yeah, agreed.
Commissioner Dershowitz.
Thank you.
I'll move to add the contract with Crossroads Counseling, Inc. to next week's consent agenda.
I will second it.
We have a motion and a second to add the contract with Crossroads Counseling, Inc. to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Great. Thanks, Julia.
Thank you.
All right. And it looks like I'm covering two appointments to our authorities, boards, and commissions. We're appointing John Peterson to the Center County General Authority and the Center County Industrial Development Authority, starting today through the 24th of February of 2030, because that's a five-year appointment. And then we have Julie, is it Angstat? Okay, who is being appointed to the Mental Health Intellectual Disability Early Intervention Advisory Board, starting today and going through February 24th of 2028. I believe that one must be a three-year appointment. Unless there's any questions, take a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve the ABC appointment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the ABC appointments. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. We have a very small consent agenda.
I'll move to approve this week's consent agenda.
I will second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve this week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. And we have a CNET request that I think John's covering.
Yes. Good morning, commissioners. It's that time of the year again for the Rose Cologne Appreciation Dinner for volunteers. As you know, Center County is home to over 100 volunteer organizations comprised of well over 1,000 volunteers, and annually, the Center County Council of Human Services holds the Rose Cologne CNET, or Rose Cologne Appreciation Dinner for those volunteers, where they recognize 30 to 40 new volunteers at that dinner. And as tradition goes, they have requested CNET sponsorship from the Center County Commissioners, so we are before you today seeking that sponsorship.
Oh, very, very happy to sponsor that, John. As you mentioned, we have well over 1,000 volunteers in the county for human services, providing a great level of service and keeping the county's costs substantially lower than they would be otherwise. Commissioner Concepcion.
Yeah, happy to help sponsor this. I think, you know, these organizations really, they work in really integral ways with our human services department and the departments in the county as well, and, you know, providing often really critical life-saving kind of care for people in our communities.
Commissioner Dershowitz.
Well, it's always, it's always fun to go to that event because they, every organization highlights one of their members as kind of their star of the year, and it really is phenomenal to see, you know, how much volunteer spirit there is in our community and all the good that they do, and we can celebrate that and share that with the rest of the citizens that aren't able to go to the dinner. So it's a great opportunity to sponsor that event.
Very.
I will make the motion to approve the CNET sponsorship for the Rose Cologne Dinner.
I will second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve the CNET sponsorship for the Rose Cologne Volunteer Dinner on April 24th. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. So we'll move on to Commissioner Concepcion with the check run.
So the check that I'd like to highlight today is to Center County Cooperative Extension. They work in concert with Penn State Extension to provide all kinds of technical assistance for farmers throughout Center County, as well as all kinds of programs that are accessible to the general public as well, if you're interested in, whether it's gardening or nutrition. They have all kinds of different programs, so that's the check that I'd like to highlight. And with that, I would move that we approve the check run dated February 21st, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the check run dated February 21st. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Concepcion. John, do we have an administrative report?
Nothing to report at this time.
All right. Moving over to voter registration. Back to Commissioner Concepcion.
So today on the voter report, we have 101,696 registered voters. That is down 51 from last week. Of those, we have 41,285 Democratic voters, 161 Green Party, 561 Libertarian, 15,519 with no affiliation, and 42,129 Republican registered voters. All of the other minor parties comprise 2,041 voters, bringing us to that total of 101,696. Our precinct of the week, this week, is precinct 88. It is Ferguson North 3. There are 1,364 registered voters, and at the last election, they had a voter turnout of 75.3%. They vote at the Blue Course Community Church at 1243 Blue Course Drive, and we'd like to thank the church there for their, the use of their space for elections.
You're getting toward the end there, Amber.
Yeah, up to 88.
Yeah.
It's not too late to run for public office, so.
That's true.
Petitions, petition packs are over there at the election office right now, so if you have the spirit to do it, now's a good time to think about it.
It's also a good time to register to vote if you're not registered to vote in Center County.
That is what.
Yeah, that's coming up too. All right. So as Commissioner Dershowitz mentioned, petitions are out there right now. In a lot of cases, for many, many, many of the elected positions in Center County, you need 10 or 11 signatures. Not that, not that hard to get. So the Board of Commissioners meeting under announcements, Board of Commissioners meeting on Tuesday, March 11th, has been canceled, and the Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, March 18th, has been canceled to allow the board to attend the Spring County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania Conference. John, do we have any executive sessions to report or hold?
No executive sessions to report or hold.
All right. A remainder of our public meeting schedule. On Thursday, the 27th, we have Finance Committee at 9:00 and Board of Elections at 2:00. We have Board of Commissioners meeting on Tuesday, the 4th, at 10:00, and then the combined Salary Board and Board of Commissioners meeting on Thursday, March 6th, at 10 o'clock, and we have a little more press in the room than normal, so open it up for questions.
Has the county sent a letter to DOC about Rockview, or has anybody heard from DOC or the Superior Administration about it?
All right. So, good questions, Gary. For the first one, we are working on the letter. We've been trying to work on an economic model as to how many, not only jobs would be reduced at both the Rockview and Quahanna facilities, which is 892, high-paying union jobs, well, good-paying union jobs with good benefits, but there's also all of the purchases that Rockview and Quahanna, which is maybe five or six miles outside of Center County, make for all of their facility needs. And then these being good-paying jobs, they all, there are also spin-off jobs available. So we're working on that. In fact, I think I'll probably be sitting down with John and JJ at some point over the next couple days, and then we'll have the commissioners workshop the wording. So we're working on it, and hopefully in the not-too-distant future, we'll have something available. We did get a phone call from the Department of Corrections, basically talking about potentially having their public meeting in the not-too-distant future, but I have no other details besides that.
You're talking about a possible public hearing?
Public hearing. A public hearing somewhere in Center County, because I believe they're required to hold at least one public hearing in each, well, in each county that has the facility. So there should be a public hearing in Center County and probably a public hearing in Clearfield County as well.
And Gary, I'd like to also thank our state legislators for their interest in promoting the ongoing conversation about keeping both Rockview and the Quahanna Boot Camp. I think their, their participation and their discussion and interest is integral to the success of us keeping Rockview and Quahanna vibrant, so.
Excellent point, Commissioner Dershowitz. We've been in communication with both state senators and all three state representatives, and they're all very supportive of trying to keep those facilities open.
Do they have any more insights? I'm asking because it seems like we've heard, there was the initial announcement.
Yes.
And then we've heard very little from DOC. Do the state lawmakers?
Pretty much all of us have not heard much more from DOC at this point, besides the calls stating that they are working on holding a public hearings in both counties, but still need to work out dates, times, and locations.
And I think one of the other conversations that will occur is the budget at the state level, and I think appropriations and other committees that are directly influenced, influence this conversation. This is, this is a long way from being resolved yet, so I'm hopeful that we can, we can turn the ship around and keep those facilities open.
The letter you send, will it be made public?
Oh, certainly, yes.
It ought to be approved at a meeting.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, great. All right. Well, unless there's anything else, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn at 10:47. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. We are adjourned at 10:47.